I would like to call this board work session to order for the public schools of Robson County on February 21st. First, you know, I'd like to say good afternoon to everybody and thank y'all for joining us on this Friday afternoon. We have, we have two people that's going to be absent, two board members that's going to be absent, actually three, we're going to have Ms. Melissa Ocean, Mr. Henry Brewer, and, and Ms. Kristy Wondell, Mr. Trey Britt, and Ms. Fields, they'll be joining us shortly, so just want to point that out there. So just like, thank y'all and thank y'all for taking the time out on this Friday evening to join us. All right. First on, first on the agenda, we're going to have Dr. Williamson.
Right. Dr. Carl, you placed a card at the board member's site, explain what that's for, please.
Good afternoon Chairman Leach, Dr. Williamson and board members. Everybody has a card at their table. We are asking that everybody place any questions or areas that they may want us to look at considering for the curriculum meeting on the fourth as topics, so that those are placed on there, so as we're developing our agenda altogether, that we have some ideas of what people may want to address. Okay? And so we'll collect these at the end of the meeting.
Thank you. All right. We're going to have, first, we're going to have cell phone use and disruptions in school, Mr.
Good afternoon Chairman Leach, Superintendent Williamson, board members. Before we bring our guest speaker, Mr. Chris Johnson, who's going to walk through a product that we are considering, I just want to give you some background information as to the reason this is on our agenda and to start the conversation as early as we are for next year. There are currently two pieces of legislation that have been proposed. One bill is in the House and one bill is in the Senate. We have included those in your packet, House Bill 87 and Senate Bill 55. And both of these proposals that are in front of our legislators right now would require us to create or develop a cell-free cellphone policy within the district. So two pieces of legislation that would require us to limit or require that students not have cell phones on our campuses or in our buildings. So I did want to make you aware too, what our current policy is, and I've included that in your packet as well, 4318, use of wireless communications. So again, we do not have, we currently do not have a cellphone ban policy within the district. We tie the usage of cell phones to our discipline matrix, and that's also been included in your packet as well. Cellphone use unauthorized can, can be either a class one violation or a class two violation, and can lead up to a student being suspended from our campuses depending on the severity and the number of times a student violates that policy. Some violations could be a teacher just simply asked a student to put it away and they refuse to. Other instances could be that they're actually videoing a fight and then decide to send that fight out on social media. So again, just in preparation for what we believe are going to be two pieces of legislation that at some point the legislators are going to approve, because as you know, our neighbors in South Carolina approved a complete cellphone ban at all campuses across the state, started in January. So at this point in time, if you do not have any questions for me, we'll turn it over to Mr. Chris Johnson, who is from Yonder, and he will walk through an option that we are considering for next year.
All right, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you for the warm introduction. Give me one second while I share my screen. Is everyone able to see my screen?
Yes.
Once again, good afternoon. My name is Chris Johnson and I am the District Partnership Director here at Yonder. I want to thank you all for taking the time to speak with me. I know we got a little weather, so I appreciate the accommodations for me to get with you guys today. Before I get going, I, I'd love to just do a quick question to get us in the mindset of understanding what we deal with on the daily when we talk about distractions in a phone-free environment. Those that I spoke to already, you have to sit this one out, but I always ask, on average, how often does one person's phone ring or alert them on the daily? Those that are in attendance, you can just throw out some numbers, and whoever gets closest, I'll be willing to send a $15 Starbucks card to.
I'm going to let 75.
I got 75. I can't hear you.
We got 75, we got 100, we got...
Who said 100?
That's great.
That's, that's it right on the head. So on average, right now, just any regular, average human being, they're getting 100 alerts a day. And what that equates to is about once every 15 minutes, the phone is going off, and that's on average. Now, when we talk about the, the youth of the day, and you know, saying our teenagers and our middle schoolers, or whatever it may be, it could be quadrupled that. So as educators, we've all seen the impact the cell phones have with the students being engaged and learning and focusing on their academics and just building healthy relationships. So here at Yonder, we believe that there's just simply times and places within the schools and classrooms that the priority should just be on learning and being a student and not instant access to technology. A quick scan of the headlines, I'm sure everyone has seen it, and that's why we're here today, the headlines just highlight what we all know. Students are facing a social, psychological, and just academic crisis as a result of just cellphone addiction. You'll see that there's so many negative impacts on cell phones on academics. I mean, the research is clear, it lets us know that, hey, 20 minutes, it takes 20 minutes for a student to regain focus every time they're distracted by a cellphone. So what did we just say? We just said, on average, once every 15 minutes, a phone is alerting a kid, or there's going off, or they're getting an alert. So if it takes them 15 minutes, it takes them 20 minutes to get re-engaged, and they're getting an alert once every 15 minutes, how focused are they within our classrooms? According to the U.S. Surgeon General, average social media use is three hours per day. I think that's a little light, but this just doubles the anxiety and depression risk amongst our youth. When they're on social media, they're trying to live up to a stigma or a fake reality, and it just leads to that, you know, like I said, that depression and that social anxiety that goes on. Distractions can lead to a 15-point decrease in mathematics scores, and just, we know that 68% of the students actually report themselves, they're actually reporting themselves that cell phones are distracting a tool in their education. So the problem is just really clear, it's just widespread and this constant smartphone access, it just leads, like I said, to a social, a psychological, and academic crisis. Our Surgeon General even issued a warning about social media's impact on the mental health of our youth. I'll let, you know, everyone can read, and I'll let them read them for themselves, but we're treating this almost like we're talking about the opioid addictions and things of that nature. It is a true issue that our kids are facing in today's society. Just to let you know, educators like you worldwide, they're trying to tackle this program, this problem every day. So we know that one in seven countries have banned cell phones in school. You will see what we're doing right now, we're talking about legislation coming to North Carolina, just FYI, and also the, the District Partner Executive for South Carolina and Virginia, both states which have adopted a cellphone, so a phone-free education for their, for their schools. And we know that 75% of the public schools in the United States have some form of restriction on cellphone use during school hours. But what we have learned is phone bans are just simply not enough. 77% of schools have banned cell phones, but the definition of banned is truly broad. You know, that can be, hey, you have it within the hallways, you know, you have to put it away, you have to put it in your backpack. But what we've found to happen is, that makes your teachers not be teachers. They have to become the phone wardens. They have to, you know what I'm saying, they have to come and say, hey, they're losing time, they're losing time of instruction, because every time they come to class, kids have to get told to put the phone away as a point of contention. Some teachers have a stricter policy than others, there's not a uniform reality within the school system that says, hey, this is what's going on. We want to break down that barrier, we want to break down that disconnect that makes sure teachers have to worry about anything but teaching. We want them to be able to just come in, the kids are in, once they check in, the bell rings, they're fully engaged. Our methods have been honed, we've been here since 2014, over 11 years, across all, all 50 states, millions of students. So we've taken the feedback from educators such as yourself, board members such as yourself, to really hone this in and figure out how to make a program, a system, that will be effective within the classroom. You'll notice, there's a quote right here, we've tried phone buckets, we've tried boxes, charging stations, when you put a phone policy in the hands of the teachers, you're setting up, you're just going to ruin the relationship that you have with the students, because they feel like you're the bad person that's taking away their phone. So we identified the problem, what is the solution? The solution is the Yonder Program. We help educators like you create phone-free classrooms and campuses. We have a patented phone pouch, combined with best-in-class support system that will really help your district hone in on policy and procedures that really give your students a phone-free education. Like I said, since 2014, millions of students have benefited from our phone-free education. We're, this is a little outdated, so it says school partners in 27 countries, that's actually all up to 35 now, and we're in all 50 states. I'm going to take a second, traditionally, if I was there, I would be able to show, but I want you to watch this video of watching our program in action. Make sure I can...
Educators around the world are seeing the damaging effects of phones on student engagement, social development, and mental health.
Cell phones...
Cell phones...
...have been linked to many of the district's recent problems.
Texting, tweeting.
Paces of anxiety and depression.
Bullying, staging fights, and filming fights.
In an effort to crack down on cellphone usage, the district piloted these magnetic locking bags called Yonder.
It's an easy solution for a generation in the midst of a mental health crisis.
Yonder is the established leader in creating phone-free schools. For over 10 years, our product and program has allowed students to experience the focus, creativity, and relief that comes from a phone-free school day. As students enter school, they place their phone in their assigned Yonder pouch. They close and secure their pouch, keeping it with them throughout the day. When leaving school, students tap their pouch on an unlocking base to retrieve their phone. Yonder is used by millions of students every day across 26 countries. Our school partners report having more teaching time in the classroom, improved student safety and wellness, better student engagement, student behavior, and academic performance. Creating phone-free schools is a community initiative. Our comprehensive program provides support to our school partners from start to finish with step-by-step guidance, parent communication materials, policy development, and proven expertise to ensure everyone understands the difference a phone-free education can make.
It's amazing to see kids come to school and not have to worry about that phone going off, or them being bullied by someone else on social media.
It was kind of annoying at first, but then I saw like the difference between like my old school and this school.
I see more people like interacting rather than being on their phones, like especially at lunchtime and break time.
They are way more engaged, everyone's happier.
It's night and day. I saw kids' faces again.
We are here to partner with you to make this a system that works for your district. Many places will offer you a tool, which is just a widget, you know what I'm saying, there's other pouches, there's other options out there where kids can just get a pouch and you're left on your own. But we give you not only the equipment, training, wraparound support for your administrators, educators, and staff throughout the school year. Why Yonder? We like to say it's a proven product. Like I said, since 2014, we've been doing this with millions of students all across, before the legislation came up in the United States and this became really prevalent, we've been doing this. So like, we talk about best practices, we've been, we've probably seen, you know what I'm saying, we've been, we've been all throughout the United States, different countries, we really know how to say, hey, we want to take it off your plate. If this is something that's coming through legislation or something that you're trying to adopt, we've probably seen it, and we want to help you. Like we said in that, in that video, we offer up, the implementation team has, will help you create the policy that you want to put in place throughout the district. We have pre-written literature to help you send out, obviously it can be modified, however you would like, to go out to your stakeholders. So you know what I'm saying, when you're trying to communicate with the parents, to let them know what's going on, when you're trying to communicate with your staff about what's going on, when you want to communicate with the students. We have videos, we have literature that will go out, will help this go out and be a smooth, true implementation. We're not just going to say, here go, here's a tool, and you're on your own, we're going to walk you through step by step to make sure. Best-in-class support. When you partner with us, not only do you get me, you get a partner success manager that's going to work with the district, they'll actually work with each and every school to come up with a plan, a setup about the location of those bases that you've seen within the video, and like we also say, immediate results. It is a true culture shift. I know some of the points that you were mentioning were just the distractions and the teachers having, you know, saying, police the phones, or kids setting up the Fight Clubs, and saying, meeting in the bear from the fight, the recordings, and then you have to sit there and have to deal with that digital imprint and that negative association for the district. When these phones are locked up, you don't have those issues. Everyone is away, there is no, you know what I'm saying, there's, obviously we know that things can happen with outside of the, the school day, but within those, those hours that within your building, everyone is engaged, everyone is locked. I'm a former RTI intervention specialist, I know that an engaged classroom is a learning classroom. We show those results because those kids have nothing else, no other distractions, they're now fully engaged in the lesson and just being students again. The program is very simple. As you see, it's phone-free equipment. You will get this extra-large pouch, every single one. We are the only company that has this locking mechanism right here, so when the kids come in daily, they can power their phone off, or they can put it on airplane mode, they simply slide it in the pouch like the video showed you, and they click this here, and it is now locked. Every single pouch, we are a tier-one intervention, so we assign a pouch to every single student. Every single pouch has this ID tag, so you have the ability to either give them a name card, or if you have like a dynasty system, or a, you know what I'm saying, a system that you do your electronics, where you notate who has what piece of equipment, you can actually assign the pouch to every individual student. So they're physically motivated, they actually take care of their, of their pouch, because there is responsibility for them and the ownership of their individual pouch. The reason we do this is because we found that it's almost just a non-invasive type thing. We, we didn't want to do collecting and add extra work for your school and stuff like that. We found that if we just give them and they, all they take home, they bring it to school, they take it home with them, it's simply the same as them bringing their textbooks or their notebooks. They get used to it, they understand how to operate in a space where, hey, when I go to work, I can't be on my phone all day. Same thing when we're at school. We need to lock in and understand how to be focused and present within the moment. Just FYI, I always bring this up, just in case folks don't know, we bring up the medical reasons. Some folks have, you know what I'm saying, medical issues, how will they have access? We have a Velco pouch, which they would unsnap, very strong, you see right there, they unsnap it, and they can put it in. So they, if they have glucose, or they want to monitor, you know what I'm saying, check on their situation, they have the ability, it looks exactly like the other pouches, folks won't be able to sit there and say there's any differentiation. Curriculum resources, we give lesson plans, we have phone-free activity guides, we make sure that the teachers have a PD, so there's a uniform policy and understanding of how to implement the program and instruct the kids within use of the phone-free environment. Lastly, and I'm going to try to be very cognizant of time, because I wanted to make sure we had enough time for questions. We've just seen an uplift in student behavior, student connection, student engagement, college and career readiness, and just mental health. Things that we've shown to go down, depression, social alienation, cyberbullying, you know what I'm saying, like I said, that's something that, you know, can be, it might happen, but it would happen outside of the, of the school day, and it's just less likely, less likely to happen, because you'll notice that the kids will actually start communicating more, they're actually having conversations, they're getting to know one another, because they're not just sitting there at lunch, walking the hallways with their face down and the phone, they're actually engaged in conversations, being able to have a one-on-one, and carry out conversations and grow and build together. Just some data, this is what you see, somebody saw some of it in the little video, 86% of our partners have saw a positive impact on safety and wellness. You know, as I said, those, those fights, those, those incidents that occur because of the cellphone, where people, you know, saying it's gossiping or starting things, and then it's in the hallway, and kids might not want to fight, but there's a, there's a phone out, there's a couple phones out, and no one wants to look like they're scared, or they didn't want to engage, and then you have an issue. Because of this, and because the phones are away, a lot of those things get eliminated because they're just, they're just not accessible, they're just not an issue that can happen without the cellphone involved. 84% of our partners saw a positive change in student engagement, and 68% saw an improvement in academic performance. Like I said, as a former RTI intervention specialist, I'm always big on academic performance. Just a quick thing that I like to point out, our student success rate, we saw growth at all levels, at the secondary level, but what I always like to point out is, in the 11th and 12th grade, when we're really talking about college and career readiness, that's where we showed our biggest growth, 78 to 84%, 84 to 89% in those testable years. This study is the first of its kind in the United States, and as you can see, like I said, our students experiencing incredible increase in academic success with the Yonder Program. Lastly, positive impact on behavior, like we were talking about those issues, those disruptions, those, you know, saying conflicts that may arise, 3.72% downward swing in behavior referrals, and a 34.72 decrease in bullying and harassment. We got just different testimonials that's all through, I can, you know, I can share those later, I won't take the time to go through and read them, but how do you get started? If you guys were to move forward, if the district was to move forward, Yonder is super easy to, to move forward. First, we start out with planning, that's going to be assessing and determining the equipment needs, we're going to set up, like I said, the implementation plan, your success manager will reach out, we will be in talks with me, the success manager, and whoever is the point of contact within the district, to really make sure that we have this laid out and we have the right plan of action. Then, like I said, that community outreach, we want to make sure that we have exactly what you need, we have those customizable templates to make sure that your parents are informed, the teachers, the staff, and the students are all prepared. Within that, in that planning, and we talked about, that's when we help craft the policy and the procedures that goes along with what you want to do with this phone-free environment. Then there's the implementation, we always share our best practices, make sure everything is set up and ready to go, and then lastly, there's post-implementation, implementation support. We don't just disappear. Once you purchase the product, it's not just, hey, here, go be on your own, we have implementation check-ins quarterly, half, at the half-year, and at the end of the year, to make sure everything is square as we roll into the next year as well. Lastly, I just say a phone education makes all the difference. As a parent, I've seen this, my kids are in a phone-free environment, they've utilized this program, I've seen the growth and just some of the things they said to us as a actual, as an actual employee with my districts, I've just... in with my districts, I've just seen the growth and just how the shift has gone in my partners that have adopted Yonder. They just have a more focused learning environment, they're deeper engagement, and they just have stronger connections within their students and educators. So I love to make a difference with you guys. We hope to create a phone-free education system within your county. I'm going to open it up now for any questions that anyone may have.
Mr. Craig, you got a question? Okay, I thought you had raised your hand. No questions?
I supplied everyone with a, hopefully everyone has a FAQ, which has a lot of information. I know I spew, as a former educator, I know the worst thing to do is to sit there and just talk for thirty minutes, but if, if you have any questions, please share my information with anyone.
Mr. Johnson, do you have a question?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Manuel?
Hello? Hello, you guys, can you hear me? Hello? Got you.
Thank you.
Short recess, Dr. Emanuel.
I know this could be a lengthy process if a district decided to adopt yonder. I'm just curious, have you had any legal kickback from parents or about a district taking the, not taking, but having the child to put the phone in pouch, maybe First Amendment?
No, nothing legal. Obviously, you have the parents that, you know, and I was one of those parents as well, that they think about that I want to have constant access and availability to reach my child. And like I said, what we do while we set up the policy and the procedure and we line it out, most folks are fine. Obviously, you know, since you have some folks that have some issues, but we've never had anything legally. Most kids actually after a week or so are actually thrilled that their parents can't constantly check in while they're trying to focus in school. We always set up that if they have to have, because the phone is going to be on the kid's person 24/7. So when they come in, they put it away, they have it. We put in the policy that if they need to use the phone, they can go to administrator. They can go to, you know, whatever, whatever the district sets up is that process. They can go, it gets unlocked, they can make the phone call right there in front of that administrator, a teacher, whoever it may be, it goes back in the pouch and they continue on their day. So they have, these kids will always have the ability to contact them. And once, you know, like I said, when we iron out that policy and those things are communicated, 99% of the time, it's, it's not an issue. Like I said, it's always the 1% that you might have some fuss, but like I said, once it's up and rolling and you're a week or two in, it just becomes second nature and it's not an issue anymore. But no legal, nothing legal, ever.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that it with the questions? We got, we've got one more, Mr. Craig Lowry?
Sir, what's the responsibility of those pouches? District pays for the first one, kids are going to lose them. Who takes care of it after the kid loses that pouch? Is that a student responsibility or district pick it up or how's that happen?
Great question. So first and foremost, within the, the order, we always put in a 15% buffer to, for, for lost pouches, for population gain, for, you know, damages that may occur. But what we do, what we do when we talk about that implementation and we're building out that policy for you, that is traditionally, not traditionally, that is 100% normally the student, which is just like damaging a laptop, losing a textbook. We will figure out what that fee that you would want it to be and we put that into policy. So when you're sending out that information about how this is going to look for the students to the parents, that's actually included in that template I was talking, I was talking about, loss or damaged pouches. We would figure out what you want to charge for it and that would actually go out on that letter here to the, to the parents about, you know, the implementation that's going on with the, with the yonder pouches. So that is not something that you would ever, the only cost that you would incur again is, is, you know, a couple of years if you needed to add some because it's normal wear and tear and you wanted to replace some. But it's not something that if the kid lost that you would have to come out of the district pocket. That's traditional, like I said, with the, the parents would be responsible for paying that fee for you guys.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Williamson?
Yes. Chris, if you would send us a reference list, North Carolina base, please, and I'll share that with all the board members. And so to our, to our board members, our intent is to pick this conversation up again in April as information and then we can go from there. We did place at your site a price list just for, for information. We've already had conversations around, do we go 412 or 612? Those kinds of things we would need to have a conversation on. But the next step in my mind is for you to get that reference list and then we put it on our board agenda in April for information.
I can do that.
Thanks.
All right, thank you, Mr. Johnson, appreciate it.
You guys have a wonderful evening.
You too. Next, we'll have immigration guidance for principals. It's Ashley White. All right, Mr. Gray.
Is this something, Dr. Williamson, that going forward, are we going to look at any more companies? Is anybody else doing this that we could compare companies to? And then, you know, just throwing this out, part of what Dr. Emanuel was saying, if we run into the people, just say, no, my kid's not doing this. They're keeping their phone. Where, you know, where are we at or what would we be with that? Because I, there's going to be some of that. And then also, I just, I always like to compare things. Is there another company we could at least look at? Or is this considered the best one now and head above everybody else?
They're considered the best one. They've been doing it longer than anybody. Those districts in North Carolina, this is the company that they use. Chatham County, Hornet County is, is using it now in four or five schools. But this seems to be the leader in terms of the pouch. But we can check and see if there's some additional companies and get a price list on that.
Would it be possible for, well, Hornet's not that far away to get a rep from there to come here and just speak to us about what success they've had with it?
We, we can.
Or just send us information if they didn't want to come here.
Right, right. And the reference list is going to help you with that, maybe to call. But we'll take that step. I know Chatham County has had tremendous amount of success with it and I'll set it up that that superintendent, Tony Jackson, can be virtual with us in April.
Because I definitely, we need something because folks, we, we can go to any school next week, especially the high schools, and if they're changing classes, there's an administrator out in the hall or somewhere saying, put your phone up. I mean, or in the classroom, it's an ongoing problem. We, we know it's a problem.
We're, we're hoping, and we've been in most districts, is that if either one of these bills pass, there's going to be a problem, just absolutely no phones. So we're hoping that we'll have this option as a way of resolving that. Because again, the pushback is saying ban phones altogether with that. So we're going to work around that. Again, in April, we'll, we'll have all that set up for you.
All right, thank you.
Good afternoon. On February 5th, we gave a presentation to principals regarding immigration enforcement in schools. This is in light of a lot of recent changes in federal laws, executive orders, that kind of thing. And it has an impact on school districts. So here's kind of what we're going to talk about briefly. First, I'm going to give you an overview of kind of real quick immigration basics so we know what we're talking about and the executive actions that have gone through. We're going to talk about the big thing that impacts y'all, which is changes to the Department of Homeland Security's prior protected areas policy. We'll talk about the right to a free, appropriate public education that all students are entitled to. That's regardless of immigration status. That's where a lot of these issues come from. And again, along with that, the rights of all children to be enrolled in school. That goes with access to schools and students for law enforcement and access to student information. That'll be our FERPA information that we'll provide. And then kind of the big what if, what if immigration officials come to your school? What are we advising principals? What do we want you guys to do or advise that you do in that, in that instance? So why is this important to you? There are 55,000 or so students who are immigrants in North Carolina's public schools. We can't separate that between students who are undocumented and who are not because we don't ask that question. But there are a lot of student immigrants in our schools in North Carolina and across the country. So some quick immigration basics, there are three agencies that fall under the Department of Homeland Security. That's USCIS. They are United States Citizenship and Immigration Services. They're kind of your administrative branch. If you're going to get a green card and, you know, the proposal where they're going to do that interview and they're talking about getting a marriage green card, they're doing that at a USCIS office. You've got Immigration Customs Enforcement. That's more of your interior immigration enforcement within the United States. And then you've got Customs and Border Patrol. They're the ones who are sitting at the border watching for immigrants crossing our borders. USCIS, you guys aren't really going to deal with unless you're having some teachers come in. The, what we're talking about here is CBP and ICE. And the main difference between those two is where physically they're enforcing those laws. We live in North Carolina. We don't live on a border. It's unlikely we're going to deal with CBP. But ICE does our interior enforcement, so we might deal with them. So as you all know, there have been some recent executive orders on lots of things. Today, we're talking about the immigration-related ones. The immigration-related executive orders follow a declaration that President Trump made. He made two on January 20th and January 21st. He issued a declaration of national emergency and said, we've got a big problem with immigration. We're going to issue a lot of executive orders to address it. The goal, enhanced vetting of visa applicants, those trying to apply for visas in the country, border control, birthright citizenship, asylum protocol and refugee programs. President Trump cited his Article II authority along with a couple other federal laws. And his goal there was to identify state and local laws, policies and activities that they said were inconsistent with their immigration initiatives. So he's broadly stating this interest in reforming immigration policy and he's done some things to do that already. We also got this directive from the Department of Justice, the Office of the Deputy Attorney General, again stating broadly the intent to have some different policies, execution of the immigration laws and ensuring that we're, again, complying with the executive branch's stated immigration initiatives. These are kind of broadly some of the executive orders and other presidential actions. We've got some proclamations here. I've got them live linked here. You can go check them out. I would encourage you to go read through them because they really detail what this administration's goals are in terms of immigration. I am not going to sit here and read through each of them with you. But these are kind of the big ones that we're talking about today. And again, I'd encourage you to go take a look. Again, you've got links to access each of them on that little red square. So our former policy that we were going by was a protected areas policy. That policy provided that there were certain locations that were off limits for immigration officers to go in and commit their enforcement actions. It was previously an Obama-era policy. They called it sensitive locations. President Biden kind of changed it a little bit to call it protected areas. Regardless, they were not allowed to go in and do immigration enforcement actions. And it was analysis of facts and judgment as to what a protected area was. But really, you can see the principle and the purpose here was to just think about what you're doing there. What is the activity that's being done there? What is the community value of that activity? And then is there going to be some kind of chilling effect from people completing that activity, participating in that activity if we're allowing immigration officers to come in and do their thing there? So you've got some examples here. Obviously, relevant here is schools, bus stops, again, relevant here, playgrounds, churches. I mean, we're not going to have someone getting confirmed and then they're walking out the door and ICE is coming in and conducting a raid. That was kind of the purpose of having these protected areas, hospitals, your weddings, kind of any big life event, funerals, religious ceremonies. And then your DSS, homeless services office, crisis centers, DV centers, stuff like that. Women's shelters would fall under that as well. These are kind of the examples of things that were previously protected areas. So everything I just told you, forget about it. It doesn't exist anymore. Benjamin Huffman is the Acting Department of Homeland Security Secretary. He issued a directive that our protected areas are no longer going to exist. It allows for immigration enforcement actions at school, so they're not protected areas anymore. But he specified this is not a directive for ICE agents to go into schools and churches and all of the other places I just mentioned. He states that enforcement agents are entrusted to use common sense. Again, think about the circumstances. I don't think we're going to see huge ICE raids in schools. This is not going to be a wide-band ability for ICE agents to enter school grounds or churches or any of those other places. There are still legal restrictions. You cannot take an immigration enforcement action or another law enforcement action without consent of the person or the person who owns the property or a valid judicial warrant. We'll talk about what a judicial warrant looks like more later. And then also, we'll talk about the exigent circumstances, exception which applies. So what are they permitted to do now? They can carry out enforcement actions in areas that were considered previously protected with the restrictions I just mentioned. What is an exigent circumstance? That's our exception here. There are times when without a warrant or without a subpoena or a judicial order, ICE or a law enforcement officer can come in and do what they want, get what they want, subject to these circumstances. So imminent risk of harm, there's a risk of violence, physical harm, death to a person. We've got an armed person entering our school grounds is an example. Hot pursuit, an individual who poses a public safety threat or is personally observed border crosser. Again, we don't live at a border. I doubt you'd be in hot pursuit of a border crosser if you're in North Carolina. But if you come into that circumstance, give us a call, let us know. Evidence destruction, there's a risk that evidence related to a criminal case to be destroyed. That's more in like a drug case if we're worried someone's flushing drugs down the toilet or something. Not going to apply as much here, but I could see a scenario where it would. A national security threat, think a terrorist threat or something like that. And then no safe alternative. There is no safe alternative for the law enforcement agency to take that action. So that's our, those are our instances where we don't worry about, there's a warrant, there's a judicial order, there's a subpoena, it's an exigent circumstance. We're going to allow them to take their action. So now that the protected areas policy has been rescinded, school officials still do retain the right to verify agents' identities, ask for their badge, ask for their name, ask for their badge number. You should do that. You should verify who they are and why they're there. Examine warrants, ask for the paperwork that they're providing. And you'll hear me say this several times, take a picture of it, send it to central office. We made a joke during the principals workshop, call Bobby. Always call Bobby. He's the one that you send it to. He'll talk to us if he needs to. We said it probably 50 times. And then again, follow your established board policies for visitors. You also have a board policy for law enforcement agencies. And I'll talk about a regulation we're going to recommend that details how you should deal with that with a little bit more clarity. So this was our lesson of the day. This was our learning objective, if you will. When law enforcement officials are seeking to enforce immigration actions, call Bobby. We have told principals to call someone in central office who can call us. We can look at the paperwork. Exigent circumstances is something we talked about. I think there are very rare circumstances, especially when it comes to student records, where it's life or death. You can almost always have someone take a look at the paperwork, make sure it's okay before we go ahead and let someone onto school grounds. And we'll talk about some circumstances where that's different, too. So this implicates our right to a free, appropriate public, public education. You've got a United States Supreme Court case that addresses this. Plyler was the superintendent of the Tyler Independent School District. The Texas Legislature in 1975 had passed a law that allowed school districts to deny children not legally admitted to the United States enrollment in schools. And in response, the Tyler Independent School District adopted a policy that required students to pay $1,000 in tuition if they were not able to provide proof of their legal admission to the United States. Plaintiff's were a group of undocumented students who resided in Texas in this school district. They challenged the part, policy and said it was.
Hold on one second, we've got a question. Dr. Emanuel?
Yeah. Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You got it. When you said, for example, if a school officials retain the right, go back to page four, slide 14. Okay. And this is supposedly, and I can see it happening. They go into the school and they identify themselves and we verify they're their agent. We examine the warrant. And it says, follow board policies. And I'm not quite sure what they are. They, I probably could look it up if we have it. And they want to make sure that I'm Lyndy Emanuel and they want to see my school record. Are you saying that they have the right to look at a kid's school folder to ascertain the parent? And can they examine records, those ICE agents?
And that's a good question. That's something you'll probably encounter. In circum, in certain circumstances, if they have a subpoena for those records, we verify that it's a valid subpoena. We're legally obligated. That's a legal order to supply those records. But again, like I said, especially in the record circumstance, I can't see like anyone dying on the table while you wait for someone to call Bobby and call us to make sure that's valid, to make sure that there's nothing untoward going on. I mean, that's a circumstance where we're going to consider really carefully before we go provide student information. But like I said, they're now allowed to go onto school campuses and take lawful action for their immigration, immigration enforcement purposes. Getting student records could be one of those things. And if they have a lawfully issued subpoena, that's one thing that they could do.
All right, Mr. Bobby?
And so to add to Dr. Emanuel's comment, we do have current board policy that outlines our relationship with law enforcement. It is our intent to come up with a regulation to go beyond that to kind of give them specifics on what those next steps need to be when that, when law enforcement comes in and asks for specific things.
And we'll review that a little bit, too.
And we consider, follow it, Mr. Ch. We consider the ICE agents the same as law enforcement, I must say.
Correct. Under the definition of your board policy, they fall under it.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? You're fine, please do. All right, so we're talking about Plyler, this court case. The court ruled in a 5-4 decision that the statute was unconstitutional. It violated the equal protection clause. And they rejected the policy that it would deter illegal immigration. They said these students' right to a free, appropriate public, public education is the most important thing and we're going to honor that regardless of immigration status. So based on that decision, schools may not deny enrollment status based on, they may not deny enrollment based on immigration status. And then they also cannot require documentation verifying such status. At the beginning, when I said we've got 55,000 kids, we don't know their immigration status because we can't ask. Here's some other non-discrimination laws that kind of have an effect here. You've got Title IV, that is our segregation and discrimination prohibited in public schools federal law. You've also got Title VI that prohibits discrimination based on race, color, national origin and federally funded programs. You've got 115(c)(1), that is the very first clause of our state statute for education. It provides that we have to provide a system of free public schools to all students in the district and it has to be an equal opportunity for all students. Obviously, there we've got the Equal Educational Opportunities Act. And then we've got Title IX, which is a sexual, the sex equality statute. But again, that has to be applied equally regardless of your immigration status, regardless of your race, color, national origin. And then you guys have policy 4001, which provides equal opportunities for a sound, basic education and no student can be excluded based on a protected characteristic. So you provide for it in your board policy as well, which I know you all know. So kind of relevant here is the McKenney, McKenney-Vento Homeless Assistance Act. This is relevant because as we see these immigration enforcement actions happen, we're going to see more family separation and we're going to have some kids who are going to be homeless. So we're going to need to deal with it there. You guys are familiar with McKenney-Vento. I'll give you a brief summary. All homeless children have the same access to a free, appropriate public education as any other student in the district is kind of the short of it. They have to have access to educational and related services. So that means they have to have the same access to educational evaluations, IEPs, a 504 plan, stuff like that. They cannot be separated from the mainstream school environment because of their homeless status. Here's our homeless definition under the McKenney-Vento Act. I'm not going to go through each of these, but it's a little different from what you might think of when you think the word homeless. You could have students who are living in trailers. You could have students who are living in emergency shelters. Students who we call in doubled up housing, they're sharing housing with another family due to a financial need. Living in cars, living in abandoned buildings, that bottom one's particularly relevant here. Students who are migratory children who qualifies homeless because they're in any of those living circumstances that are described above. Please do go through and read each of those and let me know. You're welcome to contact me if you have any questions about those. So just like any other student, you cannot discriminate on a student who is homeless based on their race, color, national origin, sex, age, disability. And that's because we're recipients of federal funding. So along that same vein, students who are undocumented have the right to enroll in school and proof of citizenship is not required. You shouldn't require a social security number or a green card or any other proof of citizenship from parents as part of the enrollment process. Typically, you're looking for a student's name, a student's date of birth and a student's address. You may, you may request proof of residency. This could look like a bill. This could look like a tax document, stuff like that. This is not required from McKenney-Vento students. We're not going to require proof of residency. And there may be instances here where we're using enrollment affidavits to enroll students in school. That's something we're developing for you guys right now. For instance, if a student is currently living with their aunt because their parent has been deported. There's, that's not their custodial guardian, guardian at that point. There's not a judicial order making them their custodial guardian. So under your policy and state law, they can't legally enroll that child. But with the affidavit we're going to develop, which comports with the exceptions laid out in 115(c), we'll be able to provide for that and you can use those affidavits. And we're working on those for a lot of our clients right now. So what are our best practices when we're interacting with immigrant families? Always be clear in explaining what information you can accept. Collect multiple emergency contacts in the event that the first emergency contact, probably the parent, is not available. Be flexible about accepting different forms of valid ID for school entry. And then always provide information about support services, your access to food, housing, clothing and healthcare. So our recommendation, which Bobby mentioned earlier, is to go ahead and move forward with 55120R. This is a regulation. Your current board policy, 5120, relationship with law enforcement, provides basically that you have to comply with law enforcement and also maintain the, you know, educational environment, not disrupt the educational environment. 5120R goes into a lot more detail about what procedures we use when law enforcement comes into school, either when we're calling them in or when they're showing up. What protections students have for their rights when they come and they try to contact a student at school or try to contact the school about getting student records? What precautions we should observe when they question or arrest students at school or come in wanting to question or arrest students at school? And what requirements we have for notifying parents and getting parental consent and reporting contact with law enforcement? All of that is in this regulation. Our recommendation is that you adopt it, so it's all laid out. Your students have Fourth Amendment rights they retain at school. That includes the right against unreasonable detentions. And that's a U.S. constitutional right. They are limited in school settings due to the need for maintaining order and safety, but they do maintain those rights. So here's some of your board policies that address some of it. Again, we've got 5120 law enforcement, the school safety, student behavior policies, instances of criminal behavior and student searches. I'm not going to go over all of them, but you know them, you're the board, you know your policies. But it's important to take away that a law enforcement officer cannot detain a student or prevent them from leaving campus or take them out of class for questioning for a non-criminal immigration violation. Just two different types of immigration violations. If you have crossed the border without any type of immigration paperwork, that is a crime. If you have a visa and you overstay that visa in this country, that's a civil infraction. Right? So if we've got a student who has had a visa for whatever reason, they overstayed it, that's a non-criminal immigration violation. Whatever they have, whatever they come to you with, the law enforcement officer can't come and demand to take that student off campus, take the student out of class to question them, et cetera.
Bobby, if I may, so our policy now is 5120. We're in the process of adopting or we will make that recommendation for the reg, reg, right? 5120R. So we're working on that.
So to Dr. Emanuel's question, we've got access to student information. And that's something you're going to see. I think Dr. Emanuel makes a good point. If you want to go and find students' parents, you can go in their student records and you can find their. and you can find their address, and you can find their names. And you can find a lot of information about students. We've had some instances where agencies will come in and say, hey, can I have, you know, the first and last names of all students from this country? Or can I have the information from all students with this last name? So it's pertinent to this topic, for sure. So you guys know FERPA, this is twenty USC one-two-three-two G, provides the right of access to student records for parents, and then students who are eligible students, that's students who are above the age of eighteen. That also provides the right to restrict access to those same folks' their records. There are certain circumstances laid out in FERPA where information is permitted to be shared without consent. That's directory information, if there's a subpoena or court order. There's also the school official exception, I won't go too in detail about that. Basically, if someone's acting as a school official, something that, or as a district, we would usually do, we can give them permission to go in and get student information. I think the one that's coming to my head right now is if there's some kind of truancy violation. They're, they're taking a school-related action and making sure kids come to school. We'll give them relevant documentation for the limited purpose of, you know, going through with that truancy case. And that's kind of our typical school official exception, there's other ones. I'm going to go ahead and say immigration enforcement is not a legitimate educational interest. There is not a time when, as a district, we perform immigration enforcement actions. So I don't think we'd fall under the school official exception, but I think it's important to mention. So what is an education record? This is a really broad definition, it's any record, file, document, video, anything that you can come up with really that contains information directly related to a student, number one. And number two, which is maintained by the district or a party acting for the district. They're not considered public records. If we get a public records request, we do not provide student records. If there are student record information in a public record that we are going to provide, we redact it so it's not disclosed to the public. This excludes some certain treatment records, like psychologist's records, some psychologist's records, sole possession records, those that are kept for the sole possession of the maker. And then peer graded papers before collected, that's a Supreme Court case where someone sued and said you violated my child's FERPA rights because you allowed peer grading. And when my child handed off their paper to the other person because they were required to peer grade, that violated their FERPA rights, the Supreme Court said, no, we're going to let people peer grade. So that is a specific exception to FERPA. And this is my, again, this is another lesson of the day. If you want another learning objective, there's always time to consult with central office staff, who can consult with us as needed for records requests, nobody's dying on the table. If they come to you with something that they're trying to say sounds like it's an emergency, they need it right now, use your best judgment, but like I said, I really can't think of a circumstance where they need it right this second. So again, these are kind of directly related to the student education records. This is the definition that FERPA provides, their name, information about their parents or family members, their address and their family's address, personal identifiers, that's their social security number or their school number, and then other indirect identifiers. I always say that's anything if someone's looking at it, they could use to figure out who this child is. And that's a good kind of thing to use to try to determine if it's an education record always. If I look at it and I can use it to try to figure out what student we're talking about, it's probably an education record. And again, a loner in combination, can I use it to figure out what this student is? Especially if that person already has personal knowledge of this student. We know that they know them and they want this specific piece of information, it's probably a student record. And that's our G bullet there. Personally identifiable information, can I use it to figure out who this child is? Our board policy for this is forty-seven hundred, it is consistent with FERPA. Their annual notification rights under FERPA were required, and that includes the notification of the right to opt out of the disclosure of directory information. I'll talk a little bit more about directory information in a second, but you may see more people opting out of the disclosure of directory information as a result of these executive orders. There are thirteen identified circumstances in FERPA where records may be disclosed without consent from the parent or the eligible student. Relevant here, I think, is a subpoena or court order, and this is our emergency exception here. Important to note that the emergency is determined by the superintendent. So the principals don't have the power to determine if there's an emergency which requires the disclosure of student records. Again, we're always going to recommend running it up the chain. Directory information is in any information records data, any of those student records that would not generally be considered harmful or an invasion of privacy if they were to be disclosed. This never includes a student's social security number, and it never includes their student ID number. Your policy lays out exactly what is directory information, you can look at that. Again, you have to offer parents and eligible students, those over eighteen, the opportunity to opt out, and that opt out can be exercised at any time. Again, there's exemptions for students who are part of the address confidentiality program or homeless students in terms of whether their address or where they're living is going to be public. And important here, any request for release of directory information must be submitted to the superintendent or superintendent's desk for approval. One thing we stress to the principals is just because there's a request for records and it falls under the directory information standard, don't just go ahead and give it out then because you're smart and you listen to the presentation and you know what directory information is. It still needs to, again, go up the ladder, call Bobby, make sure everything's good before we provide anything.
Let me ask you a question.
Sure.
So eighteen and emancipated or eighteen period?
Emancipated's a different one. I think at that point, the parental rights, including those legal rights to have access to education records, have been revoked, but we would want to look at the paperwork and that emancipation paperwork. But yes, I think it includes emancipated and then eighteen or over. Good question. All right, and then finally, we've got subpoenas and court orders for student information. We already talked about this a little bit, without consent, if it is a court order or a valid subpoena. Court orders, it's going to be one that's signed by a judge. A valid subpoena is typically going to be signed by an attorney, send it to us so we can determine whether it's a validly issued subpoena. Again, we're not dying on the table. The district has to give, under FERPA, a reasonable advance notice to that parent eligible or emancipated student before they disclose records or information pursuant to a court order or subpoena. And that's typically interpreted by courts to be like ten days. So we have to send them a letter that says, we've gotten this request for your records, we're giving you notice that you could go object to this if you want to. So we're not providing it right then anyway. There's exceptions to that notice requirement. If the subpoena or court order in its language prohibits disclosure, that's usually going to be for like a child abuse or neglect case. The parent's probably not going to consent to us providing the records if they're being accused of child abuse or neglect. And then if there's a subpoena from an Attorney General of the United States or a Deputy Attorney General, and that's only in terrorism cases, again, please send it to us so we can take a look at it. Here's our important question, what do we do if immigration officials come to our school? And then again, a big question, can I conduct a raid at my school? Because our schools are no longer protected areas, they are allowed, they are, you know, they have power to go about their immigration enforcement actions in or near schools. They do not, however, have unfettered access to schools. My advice is to treat this like you would any other interaction with law enforcement. Like I said, they fall under our definition of law enforcement. Follow your policy fifty-one twenty, if you adopt Regulation fifty-one twenty R, follow that regulation, it really details what these folks should do if these folks come to their school. One thing I really impressed upon the administrators is don't try to physically block, tackle, do anything to these people. If they are coming in and they're insistent and they're not letting you look at the paperwork, they're bursting through the door, we're not going to advise them to stand in their way, stand in the doorway, physically block them from entering. And we'll talk about a scenario that kind of falls on the edge there in a second. Again, this is your board policy fifty-one twenty, it's pretty short in terms, I think this is probably the only provision that really applies here. Our school administrators and employees are expected to cooperate in any criminal investigations, but attempt to do so in a way that minimizes any disruptions to the educational environment. That's pretty broad, the regulation is going to give them a more kind of step-by-step tutorial on how to deal with any interactions they might have. So what if ICE comes with a warrant? We talked about there's exceptions for warrants, there's two different types of warrants. One allows ICE officials to take actions on school grounds, one does not. If they come with a judicial warrant, that is the only legal document which gives any immigration officials the right to enter a school. Typically going to be called an arrest warrant or a search and seizure warrant, and it's going to be issued and signed by a judge or magistrate. What you'll probably see ICE come with is what's called an administrative warrant. That is not issued by a judge, that's issued by an immigration officer. It'll typically say something like warrant for arrest of an alien, warrant for removal, warrant for deportation. They authorize only the detention and arrest of that person. They do not authorize any intruder property, they do not authorize searches or seizures, they don't require school officials to do anything. That's, they're not a part of the Fourth Amendment with which we must comply. They don't have probable cause under those administrative warrants. So if we see that, we know that really all it does is if I see this person walking down the street and I have this administrative warrant to seize them, I can do it. You are not authorized to enter property under these. Again, please note, we have asked them to please notify an administrator immediately if an immigration official comes to school, request name, title, credentials, and again, take pictures of anything that they provide, ask for their documentation. I provided an example here of each type of warrant, I think you've got the presentation where you can look a little more closely, please do review those. We've asked the principals to be familiar with those, and then of course, we'll always take a look at anything that the district receives. And kind of our final takeaways, nobody in the district is required to report their knowledge of an undocumented immigrant to immigration officials, that is not legally required of you. You're not required to communicate or share any information with an immigration officer that falls outside of a lawful order. Again, call Bobby, contact your supervisor if you're approached by an immigration official. Important is that you cannot, you are prohibited by law to conceal, hide, harbor, or shield an undocumented immigrant from detection or to attempt to deceive an immigration official, doing so is a federal crime. So follow any lawful order, do what is asked of you, but you're not required to do anything beyond that. Anything that looks like reviewing and vetting warrants, asking for identification, declining to assist them beyond what's required by the law, that doesn't fall under that federal crime. And then again, we're working on enrollment affidavits for students whose parents are deported. They may still be able to enroll in school based on that affidavit. So here's a couple of scenarios that we went through with our principals. I'll go through with them with you, just to make sure you're paying attention. Our first scenario is a data manager at Hargrave High School. An immigration enforcement officer runs into the school's front office and is very out of breath. She states she's pursuing an undocumented immigrant who she personally witnessed crossing the U.S. border without documentation, she needs access to the school building, she saw this man jump the fence near the school. He was armed with a knife at the time. She shows you her credentials, she shows you her badge, but she does not have a warrant or order from a judge. What should you do? You got C, Mr. Simmons? We're going to allow the officer to enter school grounds immediately and institute lockdown procedures. Anybody not think C? Everyone's got C? I think C is the right answer. We tricked them on this because we have been telling them, call Bobby for two hours, but this is the one exigent circumstance where we know that there's probably somebody on campus with a knife. We're going to institute our lockdown procedures. If you want to get your SROs involved, that's not a bad call as well. But we're not going to wait until we can get someone in central office before we start taking action here. Here's our records scenario. You're the assistant principal at Evermore Academy, called to the front office because an immigration enforcement official has asked for the cumulative records of a ninth grade student named Antonio. He says Antonio's not in any trouble and that he needs to review the records urgently for a meeting with Antonio's parents in an hour. He tells you the parents gave him permission to access the records so he can help with their immigration case. He hands you a document signed by his supervisor, it cites a federal law and says that he has emergency authority to access records from units of local government. What do you do?
B.
You like B? Anybody got anything different? I think, yeah, this is what I've been saying, no one's dying on the table. We can get, if you were going to meet with the parents, maybe we can get a release signed by the parents. You know, maybe you get the parents here if you're meeting with them an hour and, you know, you're planning on seeing them anyway, get them here and they can request the records. But in the meantime, we're going to contact central office and make sure all the documentation is what's necessary. It doesn't sound like we have a subpoena here. Some of the principals said, A, we're going to tell them to get lost and come back with a warrant. That's one of those teacher answers where it's not necessarily the wrong answer, but it's probably not the best answer. It may be that they have what, you know, we need and we don't know it. So let's call somebody and have them review it and make sure that we're going about this the right way. And we want to maintain a positive relationship with law enforcement officials, and telling them to get lost is probably not the best way to do that. So good job, we did a couple of variants of the hypotheticals here, if you did it right. But then you've got this officer becoming increasingly agitated, says he's never seen a delay like this before, flashes you his badge, says it's a federal crime to deny an order from an immigration officer. We asked if the answer changes, does it? I don't think it does, I don't think the answer changes, I think we ask him to wait, say, hey, listen, again, you could start offering more options, if you're meeting with the parents, let's get them here, maybe they can come ask for the records, but we're not just going to provide you something because you said we should. And we've got our last scenario, you are the principal at Williamson Elementary School. You were reviewing a student's IEP in preparation for a meeting when three immigration enforcement officers burst through your office door. They state they urgently need to speak with a student named Julia who is a criminal. They tell you they have a warrant. You were surprised to hear this, you know Julia's a good student, she has a relatively clean discipline record. You say you're going to need to call someone in central office, I got to call Bobby, but they tell you there's no time. They show you the warrant, which is signed by an immigration officer, and says it is a warrant for arrest of alien. What do you do? Any thoughts?
Got to be, I'm going to say D.
Saying D? I like D, too. I think, you know, we've got somebody who says that they've got a warrant. We know because we listened to this presentation, it's not the type of warrant they need to enter school grounds. But in the meantime, we're going to take pictures of what they got and wait to consult with central office staff. Here's one that I think was interesting, and they go on instead. They go on into school grounds anyway, they're going to go open every, you know, door to every classroom until they find these folks. I think the answer there is exercise, exercise your best judgment. Again, we're not blocking these folks. If they seem particularly aggressive, or if you're really worried that they're not there for a good reason, I don't see any reason not to institute lockdown procedures, especially in the interest of maintaining the educational environment. But on the other side of that, if we're instituting lockdown procedures, we are disrupting the educational environment. You could call your SROs to come talk to these folks, but we also don't want a brawl breaking out between SROs and ICE officials on campus. Exercise your best judgment, call someone in central office as soon as you can. Hopefully, we don't see a scenario like that. But it's one that I thought we should contemplate, for sure. And then our final thing that we threw, we threw a wrench in here. Instead of going into the school, they decide to leave the school grounds and wait just off school grounds for Julia and get her when she gets out of school. She's a walker, they know she walks to and from school, they're going to grab her when she leaves campus. Is there anything we can do? They're off school grounds at that point, there's nothing we can do. There are certain circumstances where we may want to notify the parents. I think the kid getting on the school bus is one, where we know they're going to be waiting to get off the bus, and there may be a standoff or the kid refuses to get off the bus and the bus driver doesn't, you know, know what's going on. I don't know, Bobby, you wanted to address that or anything?
Mr. Bobby?
No, no, Ashley, my, my point was just going to be, after the meeting with the principals, you and I spoke about PTA, athletic events, anything that occurs after the eight, the three. Can you address that for us?
Again, I think if that's on school grounds, we're going to have school officials address it. If it's not, and it's not like a school sanctioned activity, there's nothing we can do about that. We're not going to ask PTA members to deal with that. I guess we're thinking about a scenario where they come for the parents, the PTA parents. If they've got a court order that's valid, if they've got that judicial type warrant, we're again going to pass it up the chain. But at that point, we're talking about district property, not the folks who are inside.
Oh, God. Turn it back on, Mr. Curry, again, I'm sorry.
So that's all I had for y'all, welcome any questions?
Mr. Curry?
Not really being funny, but the one where the kid leaves campus. This is a good kid on his campus, never in any trouble. Principal says, I'm going to put you in my car and carry you home. I mean, that, and there's people would do that.
And, yeah.
How much trouble can that principal get in doing that?
I mean, like I said, to impede, deceive a federal immigration officer, to hide, conceal, or harbor an immigrant is a federal crime.
Gets into that, okay.
Yeah, and I think that does get into that. If you're getting to the point where you know these folks have the intention of arresting this student, you put them in your car and take them away from campus, I think that gets into that. Where I think it's a little more of a gray line is we're calling the parents and letting them know this is happening. I think that probably doesn't fall under, we're not actively deceiving, we're just notifying the parents, hey, this is what's happening to your child, so you're not sitting there waiting and your child never comes home type thing.
All right. I think, any other questions?
We made, hold on. We made it clear to principals, don't allow anybody put pressure on you to give an answer or take action before you're ready and sure of what you're doing. You have the right to say wait.
Dr. Emanuel, then I've got something.
Okay. This is affecting immigrants, okay. I get, in my school, I'm the principal, I am a middle school, okay, let's say a middle school, and I get an immigrant and they can't speak a word of English, okay? And I say, well, this- Okay, and I say, well, this kid can't speak English. I'm going to put him down in the second grade. Will you speak to the law or the ruling for we, about placement of immigrants, the age appropriate placement?
Sure, I mean, it's the same age appropriate placement that would apply to anybody else and in terms of are they able to interact with their curriculum and stuff like that. You can't be making that decision arbitrarily because of their immigration status. We have ELL programs that can help with that, so I don't think just because they don't speak any English and they, you know, we can work with them on that and put them in the ELL program. I can look into it a little bit more and get you more detailed guidance, but I think the big takeaway is you cannot make a decision arbitrarily just based on a student's immigration status.
So you have to pretty well ask the kid, I'm 14 and you, you wouldn't put him in the second grade because he can't speak English. You try to place him age appropriately is what you're saying.
Yeah, not right off the bat, for sure. We would try to look into different alternatives and ways that we can.
I know we had, that was in the past. Incidences is where we had to work with the child, work with the principal, putting that child in the age appropriate placement. Okay, I just thought maybe you knew some law that addressed that.
Yeah, I think, I don't think that there's been a court case that's directly addressed that incident. I think that we want to avoid that scenario where we're putting a 14-year-old in a second grade class and we've got some fail-safe options in place that can help try to avoid that, but we're going to try to work through all of those solutions before we consider a different grade placement, for sure.
Thank you.
Jennifer, can you address that? Our staff, we have not had any issues in terms of being able to interpret and all those things, have we?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
No, we've not had any cases. We do have scenarios as Dr. Emanuel has suggested. We do have students coming in that are not bilingual and therefore we actually work with them based on placement and how that placement should look, but we've had no incidences at all like that at this time.
And we all know that we do have a large immigrant population here. And we're just talking about scenarios that could happen. We're training our principal stuff that's going to be at the school and some of our staff. But to my knowledge, and to my knowledge, ICES have not been here in Robinson County on our school grounds. Just make that, you know, just make that clear.
That's correct.
All right.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Mr. Erica, so local funding, current expenses, per pupil allocation.
Good afternoon, Chairman Leach, Superintendent Dr. Williamson, and board members. I have provided at your desk a copy of the county appropriations history. You'll see that up on the screen here. The one at your desk actually includes the current year of 2425 to show the increase of the 1.3 we've been discussing that we've received from the county and how that impacts our current per pupil local allocation. I also included on the sheet at your desk to show how much we paid out to charter schools in 2324. Anytime we get an increase in local appropriations, that increase has to also be paid out to charter schools, and I just had that for information. There's also a second sheet that is from an independent third party that verifies some of the data we've provided you. It's from Public School Form. And it's a local school finance study that they have done every year since I've been here. And it shows our appropriations. This on the sheet from Public School Form is based on the 2223 data that's shown at the top. And you'll see it mirrors what we show for 2223 on the county appropriations history of us receiving $653 per child in local funding and that we rank 100 out of 100 counties. So we rank the lowest out of all the counties. It also shows total local appropriations per student that I wanted to point out to everyone that in my opinion is misleading because the $1,612 that it shows includes low wealth funding. And low wealth is state, and a state allocation. It does not come from our county. But I did want you to have that information in case you're talking with any commissioners and they may ask about that number because this is, you know, public information is released to all major stakeholders who need this information and it's updated every year. But again, even including our state allocation of low wealth, we ranked 99th of all the other counties. So I just wanted everyone to have access to that information as an independent source. It also shows that the education budget for our county represents 25.19% of their total budget. And that ranks 64th.
Erica, if I may, let's back up and be clear because we're going to ask you as board members to help us with the budget. So that 1612 is not a real dollar amount that we receive in terms of local current expense.
That's correct.
It is that 713 is what we receive. That 1612 represent a match or 100% that gets us our low wealth, which is constantly being cut.
As part of the low wealth funding formula, which is about four pages long, our county has to input what they give us in local appropriations. So the local appropriations prior to this year that you see represented in that 653 number was $13,360,800. They, that's part of the funding formula, and if the county doesn't fund us enough, it will allow us not to get 100% of our low wealth. So that amount is enough for us to get 100% of our low wealth. But then when they add the low wealth to it, I'm not sure why they're doing that because it is not a local appropriation. That is a state fund. While low wealth is the most flexible state allotment that we receive, it is not as flexible as local. You cannot use low wealth the same way you can use local dollars. It has much more restrictions to it than local dollars do.
And then I want to clarify, and all of this is negotiation. We need to work with each other. But the county's ability, current expense per child is 2593. And we receive 713. That's an important figure, right? That's great.
Any questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Terry? Then Mr. Curry?
Hey, Ms. Erica, so I see on here that we're ranked for effort, that we're ranked 49th. Right on the bottom right of this sheet.
No, that's the state comparison, the state to the national. The funding effort, we ranked 64th. That's kind of where it says funding effort, local appropriations as percentage of revenue, kind of towards the bottom, right before the paragraph. The county ranked 64th for effort.
Funding effort, okay. That's where we're ranking the state.
Correct.
So even though we may be a hundredth in the amount, we're 64th in effort.
Correct.
So that means, okay.
And that goes along with what we've always said, that property values are lower in Robinson County. So the ability for the commissioners to increase funding is not the same as it is in other districts. So they always give the example of if there was a quarter cent raise in property tax in Wake County of how much revenue that would generate, but that's quarter cent here in Robinson would not because we don't have the same property values as other counties.
If I were a county commissioner, or if I'm just Joe Q taxpayer, I would be, I would want to know. We're, it seems like we're always asking for more. And one of the questions that I would have is, what, what can we show them? Or in what ways can we show them that, what are we doing to reduce funding? Well, what are we doing to reduce what we're putting out? What efforts are in place that we're working toward in terms of efficiency? What are we doing more efficient now than we were 10 years ago in terms of how we're using our expenditures?
Well, there's a lot of things we've done. We've closed some sites, some school sites. We try to run, each department tries to run as efficient as they can, but there are some things that are outside of our control such as the increases in the hospital and retirement and fixed cost of salaries. And the salaries represent about anywhere between any year, 82 to 85% of a total budget. So it's difficult to implement any kind of additional efficiencies when you have fixed costs that have to increase.
So our costs are going, or rising faster than our efficiencies can keep up with.
Mr. Curry?
Hold on. Ms. Erica, just reiterate again, the money from the county, how do we use it? How, how, because that's the question that I get. They say, well, we're giving you this, you're not spending it the right way, which we've got a way that we use it and we got places it goes. So where do we spend this money?
So the majority of these funds go to support the maintenance, maintenance, and I forgive me, I don't have the exact number, but I believe the budget I just recently presented was 12 million, a little over 12 million of that went to budget in the maintenance costs. Then we have a host of other things in the local budget.
Yeah, let me stop you there. Those maintenance costs, we get money anywhere else to pay for those?
No, sir.
Okay, we get money nowhere else to pay for them?
No, sir. And when I say maintenance, I mean the maintenance salaries and benefits. I mean the utility costs, costs for supplies and materials, all of those things, insurance premiums, all of those things are included. We run a print shop that's included as part of that. Technology costs are part of that. Attorney costs, the cost for the board members, workshop expenses, per diem costs.
And if I can follow up with that, that's paying their salaries. That's paying, yeah, maintenance salaries. And we're constantly losing maintenance workers to, if it's DOT, if it's UNCP, if it's wherever, other state agencies. We're constantly losing those folks because we can't compete with the salaries.
Correct.
Where more money would help us be more competitive with those salaries to keep those people employed. And that's just only one area. Is there another, I know you mentioned all the print stuff, is there another area that a lot of this local money goes to?
Well, that's the bulk of the 13 million. That only leaves about a million dollars. Like I say, we have the match for RTC. We only get half of that back. So we have to allocate for the other half of the RTC salaries. We have, part of that appropriation goes to pay the 1%. At one point, PSRC's teacher supplement was 5%, as you'll see back in the 1718 school year. The county gave us $930 to increase that from 5% to 6%, and that's still in effect. So that money goes to pay that additional 1% increase. The other five comes from low wealth funding.
So there's no way of taking a sizable chunk of this money and, okay, let's put it aside, we're going to build schools. We're not taking a million dollars, I don't know how many years that would take, but we can't take money and put aside to do something later on because we need all the money right now.
That's correct.
That's why we need increases, even though we do have the problem, like you say, half percent raise of taxes here is not going to be the same as it would be in Charlotte.
Correct.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Williams, we got Trey.
So I want to go back to Terry's question that he asked. So for example, ability to pay, again, that dollar amount on this 2593. We received 713. This year, we asked for a $6 million increase over a two-year period of time that would bring us up to $1,000 per child. We're all working together. We need to be good partners. So that's 1,000 against the 2593. That's reasonable. That is, that would still not raise us much in terms of from the bottom because the local state average is what? Do you know off the top of your head?
The local state average is somewhere between 1,800 and 2,100. I'll have to get, based on this update here.
Right.
There's also a graphic on the Public School Form website that shows the lowest six counties, which we're a part of that for local appropriations. The lowest six counties, if you combine all six of those counties together, is still less per pupil than Orange County by itself. Orange County gets over $6,000 per child, and collectively, the lowest six districts get less than Orange County.
So of that 6 million, we said over a two-year period of time, we have, so 3 million this year, we received how much?
1.3.
1.3 that we received of that 3 million. And again, not complaining, we've got to be good partners, that, but the need is real. We're seeing a reduction. We're not sure about federal money. Jennifer and I had a conversation this morning, the impact of our federal dollars. We're going to have to cut more off the top just to survive, to survive. And Erica, when you and I talked last year, we believed that the $1,000 will hold us for two or three years.
Correct. Yes, sir. But again, the very first thing that, the very first email we received from the New State Treasurer indicated hospital costs would go up. Now, that may be a combination of to the employees, but it may also include to the employers. We've seen a steady increase in hospital costs. We're over $8,000 now per person. When I started, it was less than three. So that match for every person that has hospital insurance with us, we have to match that 8,000. So we don't know, we have not heard yet any numbers moving forward with that, but that's just one example of many things that impact our budget.
This is Trey.
Ms. Erica, I got one quick question on, as far as 23 and 24 paid to charter schools at 827. Do you know what 24 and 25 is going to be at, or is it going to be around that number?
It's going to be higher than that.
Do you have an idea of how much higher?
I think we're going to get closer to a million dollars because of the increase in, at some of our locations that we're paying and the increase in the local appropriations that we got this year, we have to include that in our, so I think it's, we're going to be really close to a million dollars.
Thank you, ma'am.
May I add to Trey's question? We shared this morning some information of students and kids in Robinson County eligible to attend the public schools. We're serving 88% of those eligible students, which is high for us, but we're serving 88%. That's pretty good.
The remaining 12% are broken down between charter schools, private schools, and home schools.
Ms. Krista Fields?
So I'm looking at these other school districts, and on average, they serve about 500 students per school. And I'm looking at our ADM, which continues to decrease. I just think we need to consider the fact that we may need to consolidate some of these schools and lessen our burden. Because we talk about the other schools and how much they're getting per student, but they don't have the amount of schools open that we do. Would that not factor into the issue we have right now?
Most of the schools that get more funding per pupil than we do have less sites, but they're getting more money in their total budget than we are. For example, Scotland County, I know I looked at today, has a little over 5,300 students, but they get $10 million from the county. So per pupil wise, they're getting a lot more money than we do. And yes, they have less sites, but it just breaks down to the per pupil funding and being able to allocate that because we'd still have the same number of students even if we had less sites.
So we wouldn't have the cost of those sites, correct?
That's correct. We'd still have, because the sites we've closed, we still have to maintain utility costs because we don't want the buildings to completely, you know, degenerate or be in a position where we couldn't do something with them. So we do still have utility costs there. We still have utilities at all of our buildings, except West Lumberton's the only one we don't have anything running to. Because another facility is using Green Grove. We use RB Dean for storage. We're using Rolling Middle for laps. So we still have all those utility costs and upkeep.
Mr. Bradley Phillips?
Dr. Williamson, you said that if we got that $1,000 per people, it would hold us for a couple of years. Would that be able to incentivize more maintenance folks, or what will we be able to do to maintain there?
The truth is, that thousand would probably just allow us to maintain what we have and who we have in place at this point. Wouldn't get us ahead in terms of being able to add some positions that we do need, just to maintain where we are.
Mr. Terry?
Ms. Erica, what percent of our current local funds? Ms. Erica, what percent of our current local funds would you say are fixed? They're just going out every month?
For like utilities and salaries?
Yes.
So salaries is the, I've done it on the total budget. It was, I think, 81%. I have to look at the local portion, but I'd say it's high 80s between all the fixed costs.
Okay.
For sure. Because utility bills are going to come every month. And, you know, I don't know if, I have personally experienced an increased utility cost since December and January. Our schools have seen the same thing. So we've seen a, a larger cost with the cold weather spells we've been having. Those bills have definitely increased.
And again, I want us to be clear. We are having to take money from some federal areas, some state monies, low wefts, duty support, all of that to offset that low 713. That's what we're doing. And so we're having to reduce some programs and those kinds of things. So that's the real conversation. Our hope is, and what we're going to ask you as board members to do is to pair off with the county commissioner and share this information and, and have a one-on-one conversation with commissioners. Again, we're not, they have really supported us. That's, I'm not saying that they're not because they are, but we've got to have some support and increase that per pupil local allocation. And, and again, Mr. Terry, we're going to ask that you work with our board members and pair off and to sit down and have a one-on-one conversation with commissioners. However, you pair them off, please.
All right, I'll do that. Appreciate it. Any other questions for Ms. Erica?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Erica. Now we have generative AI, uh, implementation and consideration by Mr. Lisa Tomlin, Dr. Wendy Dorsey-Car, um, Dr. Deborah Dallas.
Good afternoon, Dr. Williamson, Chairman Leach, and board members. My name's Lisa Thoman, and I'm a part of digital teaching and learning here with inside the curriculum and instruction department. Today, we're going to take a look at the graphic in front. And it comes from Portrait of a Graduate and what the World Economic Forum is pushing out as of January of 2025 of what the core skills of our future employers and employees are going to need. And some of those things that are listed there directly relate to the Portrait of a Graduate. The adaptability, collaboration, communication, critical thinking, empathy, the learner's mindset, personal responsibility. So when we're looking at those core skills, we're really looking at analytical thinking, leadership and social skills, techno- technological abilities, curiosity and lifelong learning, service orientation and customer service, and the list can go on. Inside here, we talk about a future which many things can be completed faster and perhaps better by artificial intelligence. Companies will value and seek after the durability, transferable, and human skills that focus in the North Carolina Portrait of a Graduate. These are skills that cannot be replicated by AI, and they will be highly valued. In addition to these durable human skills, students will need to be AI literate and able to effectively work with AI as a partner. Think of it as a thought partner, working hand in hand, using AI and their educational minds that they've received. To truly prepare students for the world they will graduate into, whether they graduate in 2024 or in 2034, all these durable skills and AI literacy should be infused into the grade levels and all curriculum areas. On the next slide, we're talking about PSRC has created, developed the Gen AI Literacy Plan. And in your packet today, you should have that with you. In the packet or in the actual plan, we talk about some definitions. So what is artificial intelligence? Excuse me if I use the word AI in the process. The ability of a digital computer or computer-controlled robot to perform tasks commonly associated with human intelligent beings. AI literacy, the knowledge, skills, and attitudes associated with how artificial intelligence works, including its principles, concepts, and applications, as well as how to use artificial intelligence, such as its limitations, implications, and ethical considerations. Generative artificial intelligence, Gen AI, is an artificial intelligence tool that responds to user input by generating new text images, audio, video, or content based in its training data. Public Schools of Robinson County has developed a Gen AI guideline and a Gen AI literacy plan, supporting North Carolina's Digital Learning Plan and the North Carolina Generative AI Implementation Recommendations and Considerations. The plan begins with us defining these items that I've just read out aloud. AI literacy. These two definitions are really specific for our staff and for our students. The first one in the staff, our staff AI literacy topics are based, are based on AI principles and applications, skills to recognize AI usage, awareness of AI limitations, and potential biases, and practical and ethical and safe use of generative AI tools. For our students, student AI literacy topics are based on AI principles and applications, skills to recognize AI usage, awareness of AI limitations, and potential biases in practical and ethical and safe use of generative AI tools. This graphic that we have here really brought together some of our concerns, but at the same time, how we want to lay some things out. We've called it an AI literacy framework. This is how, and what we're going to be covering when we're doing professional development with our staff. So the district provides continuous professional development for all our staff and students in compliance with the Digital Learning Plan from the state and the state guidance with generative AI. The professional development will include time to practice and attain proficiency skills with the tools, generative AI tools, before extending them to our students. It will equip educators with the necessary knowledge to efficiently employ generative AI in their work while ensuring its safe and responsible integration into the classroom instruction. So in just listing the topics there, hardware and software, information and data literacy, communication and collaboration, content generation, safety, problem solving, and career competencies. When we look at the graphic in front, we're talking about student AI literacy and the grade spans. Students can increase skills to boost AI literacy and learn about AI, even if yet they can't yet learn with AI. And the meaning of that is our elementary students, I like to call them littles, may not be ready for a generative AI tool. But the teacher may expose the tool in how they teach the littles. For middle school 68 and high school 913, we'll continue to expose as we teach our teachers and staff how those tools work in combination with the curriculum and instruction. Roles and responsibilities. This does go back to our AI literacy plan as well for roles and responsibilities. We have four targeted bullets there for district and school leadership. Responsibilities for providing resources, guidance, and support for implementing the guidance document, as well as overseeing the use of AI systems within the district. Teachers, responsibility for implementing AI in their classroom when relevant to instruction, providing instruction on using AI technologies, and ensuring the proper utilization of AI tools in the classroom in compliance with district policies. Students, responsibility for using AI technologies with integrity and responsibility in compliance with district policies. Parents and guardians, responsible for supporting their children's use of AI technologies in compliance with district policies. On this next slide, these are the policies that Gen AI is starting to evolve inside of. The two today that we're going to be primarily focused on is Policy 3220, Technology in Educational Program. The State Board of Ed is also working on revisions to dedicate a strict AI policy inside there. And Policy 3225, 4312, and 7320, Technology Responsible Use. State Board of Education and PSRC Policy Updates. On June 11, 2024, Policy 3220, Technology in Educational Program. The district should develop and maintain guidelines that detail the acceptable and responsible use of Gen AI by school system employees and students. That all student system employees should be AI literate, and that we should develop a comprehensive AI literacy training strategy that involves training all employees and students in effective, ethical, and safe use of the AI policies.
How will we make sure that plagiarism is not taking place? What, how is this designed to prevent or to, to, to monitor that?
We won't. We won't. So student integrity is going to be a way where, when we train and we're starting to train our principals at the top level and shifting down, it's letting students understand that integrity piece.
Sure, go ahead. I'm a little bit older than Lisa, so I remember when we went from card catalog to articles, to citing, to quoting. And so when I think about the change to Gen AI, it's very similar. Like, we have to teach kids to notate what they've used AI for. The same thing when the internet came out, right? Now we have all of this information. How do I know that they're just not, like you said, I'm just stealing the words? So it's a lot of the same strategies. So one of the techniques, and I don't want to get into the weeds, but when we teach kids how to use it, say at the high school, we want to know, how did you use it? So you might ask kids if they're responding to, say, a prompt. Show us your thread that you put into your artificial intelligence. We want to see what you used. Make sure you cite it, just like we had to cite the internet. So it's some of those kind of teaching practices that we had to learn when the internet came. We have to teach and learn how to adapt to that when it comes to Gen AI. But like Ms. Thoman said, it's going to rely on the integrity, your honor policy, plagiarism, cheating. All of that is still there, but it's very similar when I think back to how we had to adapt to the internet. We have to teach kids to account for what they did. So as a teacher, I know where your words came from. I know where your work came from, and I can check that.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Terry, if I may, Terry, how are y'all dealing with that at the university?
Mr. Terry.
Thank you for that question, Dr. Williamson. It's a challenge. I'm teaching a class. I've, I've been teaching a class for over the past few semesters. And one of my assignments, it's in the school ahead, and one of my assignments is for, is for students to actually use AI. I, I want them to go into ChatGPT or whatever and answer a prompt and just paste what ChatGPT gives them. And, uh, and we've got a tool built into our, our Canvas system. It's called Turnitin. And with Turnitin, it's a plagiarism detection tool. But anyway, I would say that in response to Ms. Kristi's question, I would say that, um, it's a cat and mouse game. So you've got an AI tool that's trying to detect another AI tool. And when this one gets ahead a little bit, this one is behind, and it's constantly moving. So with, like, with the assignment that I gave last semester, I, I asked them to respond to that prompt and just paste what ChatGPT gave them. And out of, out of about, uh, I think I had maybe 28 students. I would say that the tool that we use only detected maybe like five of them. But my purpose in that assignment was to show them that these tools were available and that they worked. And it kind of just blew up. I was like, okay, here we go. So it's not really, you can't solely rely on those tools for, for detection. They're not, they're not trustworthy right now. They're just not to that point. And, and I don't think, um, this, the generative AI piece is, is something that's kind of, that's kind of sneaking up on us. And if you don't use it a lot, um, it's really, I, I would like to see us like give a demonstration. One of the challenges right now is it's becoming, these tools are becoming so ubiquitous. So like with the new version of PowerPoint, it has Copilot. You can open up PowerPoint and just say, create a presentation about cell division for eighth grade class, 10 slides, and it'll create the slides, the notes, and everything. And these tools are like really becoming, uh, becoming ubiquitous in such a way that you don't have to go out and actively search for them. This being built in to what they're already using. So I would say that, uh, students are going to become, uh, the creative pieces is always going to be there. So like, for example, if you ask students to respond to a prompt, they, they might become more, more in the role of a curator versus somebody who's actually creating. So the, the AI may come up with like two or three versions of it, and they may, may have to pick the best one. One of the skills that's going to be, uh, we're, we're actually having, um, you asked about the university. I'm moderating AI debate. We're having like an academic debate in a couple of weeks. And we've got some professors that are, that are going to be on, on teams, and they're going to be responding to questions. We've got like a for-side, for AI and against AI side. But we're doing this as a thought exercise. In terms of policy, I don't think that, I don't think that it's, that generative AI is being explicitly mentioned in their policies anywhere. We're, we're using our general academic integrity policy, policy to cover, you know, to cover it. But, um, we, we've got to start thinking about this generative AI piece more than just detection and trying to catch students. Because I would say, you know, in, in the next five years, this is almost like another industrial revolution. And it's coming after white collar jobs. A 110%, the world's going to change. And there's, uh, the person that's successful in the future is going to be one that, that knows how to use these tools. And we've got to figure out how, how can we set our students up for success? There's already CEOs talking about, talking about, um, the workforce in terms of, you've got X number of people that work for you, but you've also got X number of agents. And so that's what, the term that they're using is AI agents. So an agent is almost like an employee. And I've built some of those, some of those agents myself, and these are actually, um, these are actually tools that can go out and do work on your behalf, essentially. That's what, that's what an agent is. And, um, I would also say that it's a, it's a, it's a complex, it's a complex conversation. It's very nuanced and, um, it's, it's complicated. I'd really like to, like to give a demonstration just to show you how we, how easy it is to, to just create something that looks like somebody sat down and typed it. And it's, it's not copying and pasting from the internet. It's actually creating something that's never been created. So, um, we've, we've really start, got to start thinking, thinking about how these tools are going to impact our students in the, in the long term. And one of the things that we're, you know, we're discussing, you know, does, does, are these tools going to hinder students' ability to think critically in, in the future? And how is it impacting them? But in actuality, right now, you've got, imagine a situation where a teacher uses AI to create an assignment, right? A student uses, uses AI to do the assignment. And then that teacher, so they turn it in, and then that student uses AI to grade it. That's happening, that's happening. So, um, it's a very interesting dynamic, and everybody's grappling with it.
I agree with Terry.
So to continue the conversation, Ms. Christie, when we, within this past month, we had principals in, and we started to show them how to prompt, is what they call it, and how to get generative AI or AI to work for them. But at the end of the day, it's a machine. It's a robot. It's someone who sits behind the machine. And a lot of our AI across any of the platforms, they're all machine-driven based on the knowledge given. And what I tried to ensure to our principals and as we have conversations with teachers is that you are the educated one sitting there. And your educational perspective is the most important because you're teaching our students. So if we took generative AI or AI and used it as a thought partner, where in our curriculums would it allow us to teach how we can pull that information, like instead of going to a library in a card catalog? I am not that old. I like the smell of a library still. Anyway, but it's bringing that card catalog into a digital perspective of what our kids know, but showing them how to do that research and pull it and then justify it. So those threads that become, and here's that thought piece, and then the teacher saying, well, go check the the American Revolution. Did that exist at the time that it told you? AI is going to give an answer, no matter what, right, wrong, indifferent. That's the difference. It's going to shoot out an answer to you. It's going to be up to the teacher and the student to find that backup. Where can you show me that really existed? And that's where that education piece is still going to tie back in. Getting back to where we were, so State Board of Education has their AI policy. They are in the process of building it. And so here is thirty-two twenty, Technology in Education Program, and it's in its pending state. Where all school system employees and students should be AI literate. The superintendent or designee shall develop a comprehensive AI literacy training strategy that involves training all employees and students. The training should equip employees with the necessary knowledge to effectively employ generative AI in their work while ensuring its safety, responsible integration into the classroom. That link that's right there on the bottom is inside your packet as well. It gives you the full scope of the two policies that the State Board is working through. In section F-ten, it is talking about generative AI professionally and to guide students effectively and ethically using generative AI as a learning partner. We all know that everyone, I say everyone very broadly, cheating will always exist. So AI is going to be no different. There's always going to have that part. However, entrusting students and having students understand their integrity part is going to be, and honesty is going to be important. December tenth, we went through Policy thirty-two twenty-five, forty-three twelve, seventy-three twenty, and the Technology Responsible Use. And I'll let you read that yellow area right there of what we're working through or the State Board is working through. And this is our roadmap as we're moving forward. NCDPI created a suggested roadmap for the responsible implementation of generative AI in the schools, as noted right there. It's in four steps. We are at the establishing of foundation. And this is where we began. So NCDPI, Artificial Intelligence Collaborative, was selected to participate in the first cohort. We started February twenty-eighth through June of twenty twenty-four. We then moved into sending a team of five to attend the NCDPI AI Summit in May. And over the summer last year is where we established a foundation and roadmap for generative AI. Our generative AI rollout to this day is where we started. We started June eleventh with the adopting of the policies. In August, we developed that generative AI guideline and Gen AI literacy plan that is still a live document. September nineteenth, we started with Principals and District Staff Professional Development and continued that professional development October eighteenth. December tenth, we went ahead and adopted the new policy thirty-two twenty-five, forty-three twelve, seventy-three twenty, the Technology Responsible Use. And just recently, January twentieth through the twenty-second, Dr. Anthony Barton and Mr. Andrew Davis began their cohort with NCDPI's Digital Teaching and Learning, Artificial Intelligence High School Train the Trainer Cohort. We continued with our principal and district staff Gen AI Professional Development. And then today introducing some of those works with you today. In the near future, March of twenty twenty, March twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-five, we will continue our work with Principals and District Staff with the Gen AI Professional Development. And of course, through the spring, we are going to be moving forward in establishing an AI implementation team and continue the professional development plan. Summer of twenty twenty-five, we will be moving through the AI implementation team and outlining opportunities and generative AI tools for the classroom integration. And then we are hoping come fall of twenty twenty-five, we will start intricate training with our DTL tech coaches and media coordinators with Gen AI tools. Any questions?
Any questions? Nope. Thank you. Next, we will have High School Diploma Endorsement by Dr. Wendy Dorsecar.
So good afternoon, Chairman Leach, Dr. Williamson, and Board members. I wanted to I wanted to review some of the endorsements that the state already offered for the high school, but also talk about new endorsements that are coming in play. So students in North Carolina public schools may earn one or more endorsements on their high school diploma. These endorsements indicate that students have completed specific courses, concentrations, preparing them for ready careers or college. Students may earn more than one diploma endorsement. Students are not required to earn endorsement or to receive their diploma, and all of this is based on the State Board Education Policy Grad oh-oh-seven. You have a packet that looks like this in your packet that you received. We created this to help provide an overview of the endorsements that are available. And so previous years, we had four endorsements that already existed. We had the career endorsement, and if you want to see where they are, page three of that. We had a career endorsement, a college endorsement, a college UNC endorsement, and global language endorsement, and NC Academic Scholars endorsement. This year, there are two endorsements that have just started. The Arts Proficiency endorsement that specifically follows and looks at arts education and the NC Citizenship Proficiency endorsement. So both of these endorsements are brand new for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. And so we have outlined a book that we're giving to every middle school and high school counselor, every principal, and every eighth grade student up so that they're aware of all the endorsements, certifications, and credentials that are available. So as they're scheduling, they can make sound choices of what courses they would like to take to ensure that they earn these opportunities. Is there any questions about the endorsements?
No questions? That would go. Now we're going to, at this time, we're going to take a recess. We're going to take a ten-minute recess. All right. From recess, now we have Mr. Bobby, and we're going to have New Student Information Systems, Infinite Campus.
Good, good afternoon again, Chairman Leach, Superintendent Williamson, Board members. Want to spend a little bit of time talking about our new student information system that the state has transitioned to Infinite Campus. So I always like when we get this out, as we have transitions, is to kind of give you a history, and I guess I'm going to date myself and maybe a couple of other folks in this room that may remember some of these other systems. I didn't say your name, Dr. Mania. But many years ago, the first system, and I could not find a start date for this, that the state used for student information was called SIMS. And it was school-based. There was no connection between one school and another school. There was no statewide database system. And so each school kind of had their standalone DOS program. If something needed to be extracted, we had the floppy disk, and then we moved to the small disk. So again, that kind of, I remember it when I started. So that was some thirty years ago. That was the original system that I can remember. In two thousand and nine, the state transitioned to NC wise. And it was phased in, and this became the first statewide database system that housed all student information. So with NC wise, when Robinson converted, I remember we had to convert in the middle of the year. It was one of those let's get operating, I think we ended up converting sometime around November or December. We had to get our P P principal monthly reports to convert over and once we got that to happen, then we were full NC wise. So again, that was another system that was phased in statewide, not all districts jumped on board at one time. So we kept Power School, I mean, I'm sorry, NC wise for about five years, but during that five year period between two thousand and nine and two thousand and fourteen. Power School was owned by Pearson, Pearson ended up buying NC wise. And so we just ended up making a seamless transition from Wise to Power School. And so as you can see, we have been on this system since two thousand and fourteen statewide. So imagine ten plus years of student data in one place, everybody's grown accustomed to it. We know what we're doing when we log in every morning, we know what we're gonna get, we know what it's gonna spit out, we know what we can put into it. So last year on November was the November twenty three, the State Board of Education decided to. Opt for a new contract for student information system and they went with infinite campus. That was voted on in November of two thousand and twenty three. Again, with another phase rollout, we had districts to come on board this school year. And then the remaining districts will come on board next school year. So the current contract for infinite campus is gonna be through, it says November twenty 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 eight. But there again, I'm not quite sure how we could, well, we have done it before, drop one system and pick up another system in the middle of a school year. So just to give you some timelines of what has happened since November twenty three. In the, in the spring of twenty four, started having, just started having general overview meetings. Of what infinite campus could do, what the support was gonna look like statewide, district wide. And also during that time, also reaching out to school districts and saying, hey, would you like to be a pilot? There are benefits to being one of the first and there are also downfalls of being one of the first. When our team met, we said, let somebody else jump on this, ride it out the first year. Let them get all the kinks and bugs out of it and then we will come on board in phase two. So we are scheduled to come on board with infinite campus for the twenty five twenty six school year. So currently about half the districts in the state are currently on infinite campus. So you know, that does create some headaches force in terms of keeping our data clean because the two systems are not communicating with one another. But DPI has set up a website as students transition from a power school district to an infinite campus district. To kind of keep that data moving smoothly back and forth. Because as you're aware, all that is tied to that one ID number that travels with a student from kindergarten on. So again, if we get a child that might move from Bladen, Bladen is currently on infinite campus. Over here, we definitely do not want to create another number for that child. So we have to be aware of where those kids are coming from and have the ability to, to track them. I also want to add here. That based upon the information we have, as I've already stated, we've been on Power School now for ten plus years. They are gonna have the ability to bring over seven plus years worth of data. So anything outside of that seventh year, we're gonna work to try to house that data here within the district in case it's ever needed. So what has, what's next? So in throughout the training process Cole, if you'll hit the next one, so what has happened, we had to designate a contact person for our district and of course that was Ms. Angela Jones. Ms. Angela Jones has been through two of these and it was kind of amazing when we went, when I met with our data managers right before Christmas. Amazingly, I think if my mind's right, there are at least four that have been with us through all of these transitions. And they made it very clear to me, this is they're gonna be their last transition. So, so hopefully they will stick around until we get the new school year up and running. But it's amazing that we've had at least four individuals that have seen all four systems. So Ms. Angela Jones is our primary contact person. We've gone through scheduling our first meeting and kind of talked through the implementation process. So during that process here, our key or key steps that took place in our conversation with DPI. We have an implementation project manager that Ms. Angela and the team and I'll share the team with you shortly. Are having sometimes weekly, monthly conversations with about what does our data look like as we transition from. Power School to Infinite Campus. Long discussion about the implementation process, again, the benefit of being in phase two. Is that we have about half of our districts that have already done this. So again, we can learn from them. Luckily, we have a good partnership with Moore County. Moore County went through last year and they're willing to share a lot of their documents and a lot of their knowledge with us. So as always, one of the biggest things is ensuring all of our school information is correct. We've, we received our implementation guide with instructions to our implementation dashboard. So again, Ms. Angela is really doing two tasks, her and the team at this time. Maintaining all of our current data in Power School, but also ensuring that that data is correct. So that when we transition to infinite campus, number one, we won't lose anything. But number most importantly is that that data that we currently have is clean and will not have an issue transitioning over. So the biggest part, and that is what we're, what we will spend the majority, the team will spend the majority of the spring working on. Getting ready for live implementation or live, becoming live July one. So we have a dedicated team that works with us to include the project manager. Data conversion analysis, assist training specialist and business consultant. So Ms. Angela and our folks here in the district are constantly meeting with these individuals to discuss our current data. Are we on schedule, what do we need to work on in order to move over to infinite campus? One, Ms. Angela received her first data drop, I'm gonna say last week. And the team shared with her at this point, based upon the size of the district. That this is one of the cleanest datas that they've seen at this point in the conversion process. So once we knew, once we knew we were gonna be in phase two, Ms. Angela started working with her folks to ensure cleanup. To make the conversion a whole lot easier. So. As I've already shared with you in terms of data, data conversion, we're gonna have at least seven years worth of data that's gonna come over. From Power School, so anything prior to that, Ms. Angela is working on a plan and that could just be simply going in PDFing transcripts. So if a student comes up and says, I need a transcript from all the way back to fourteen, then we have the ability to pour that for them. So, and this is strange to me and one of the key pieces that infinite campus uses. To match students is addresses. So they determine households around that address. So unlike Power School where we can go in and we can identify families and we make that connection. Infinite Campus will make connections based on addresses. So even as we have employees or future employees, if we're still with infinite campus. And they come back as an employee from a student, infinite campus is still gonna tie back to that original address. And make all connections from there. So that's why it is essential that our data managers over the next. Or have already been working on it, but moving forward to get all addresses correct and accurate in power, in Power School. Because they will pull that data and send it over. Working with our transportation department to ensure all roads are spelled correctly in the same across all schools. We're also scheduling meetings in attendance areas like say middle, elementary, middle school and high school to sit down and say, okay. I've got Billy at the elementary school, Suzie's at the middle school, Johnny's at the high school. Let's connect those three so that when we get to infinite campus, that connection's already made and it's one household. Same thing with contacts. Our schools are spending a lot of time to ensure we have accurate contacts in the system. So that's gonna mean we, we not only do we have accurate contacts with correct phone numbers, but we have the correct relationships. Sometimes our, our schools may go in and put in a mother or father and not tie a relationship to it. But in infinite campus, that relationship is gonna be key. Because again, to make those connections between students in different attendance zones, it's gonna be that address in the contacts. Another thing that has kind of sped up the process this year. Infinite Campus, once we make that conversion, as you all know, we spend the spring registering students for high school courses. Then those courses at the end of what Power School would call E O Y would transfer over and we would have the kid's schedules. Infinite Campus, because we are going through a conversion process, we must schedule and commit our master schedule prior to the beginning of May. So high schools have kind of sped that process up, I think by about two weeks. The key to this that is different from what we have been used to in Power School is our elementary schools have to do the same thing. Typically, our elementary schools can come back in July, create their master schedule, plug everything in and keep going. Infinite Campus will not allow us to do that. So all of our schools must have a master schedule in place. Prior to this May conversion. And I've already stated several times that Ms. Angela is working on a way to keep, to pull and export that historical data. So what's happening now in Robertson County? Our implementation team is Ms. Angela's Angela Jones, she is the primary point of contact because she is our Power School coordinator. We have Ms. Lisa Thoman who is working through the digital technology and learning side of it. We have Dr. Michael Rouse, he's working on the human resources part and of course Cole Wilkins on the technology part. So Ms. Angela has already started this, as I stated, we met all the way back in December. She is scheduling monthly meetings with data managers away from the schools. So if principals are complaining saying, hey, our data manager is not here, they're gone two or three days out of the week. There's a reason for that because data managers have to get in and ensure that data, their data in the current system is clean. And accurate in order for it to transfer over to infinite campus. She's also scheduling meetings by school regions. So as I've stated earlier, it's vital that elementary talks the middle, middle talks the high. And everybody's on the same page because those connections between addresses, contacts must be made. In order for the system to work properly. Infinite Campus has a suite of programs that are free to us. We are working through those that we will like to bring on. One of those is messaging from listening to that round one. They've advised us do not use the messaging feature. So we're gonna continue with thrill share at least another year. We have the ability, they also have a learning management system, we've made the decision to try to continue with Canvas for this school year. So they're just, just as Power School has the parent portals, Infinite Campus will have the same thing as well. So I've linked here in the presentation, a video that will explain the parent portals, Cole, can we see if that works? We may not watch all of it, but just to give you an idea, because there was a link, there was a problem with it the other day. So just as our parents are able to log into Power School, they will have the same ability.
Hello, my name is Steve Simons and I'm an application specialist here with Infinite Campus. Today's video is going to focus on an overview of the parent and student portal. We will focus on three primary areas for this demonstration. We will first take a look at the home screen and navigation on the parent portal side. We will then move into self-service features. And then lastly, we'll move over to the student portal and go through some of the features there, including assignment submission. With that said, let's get started. When parents first log in, this is what they will see. They can log in and see all of their students that have enrollments within the school district all together. Over here on the right, we can see the announcements. Notification area. For all of the schools that you have students that attend. So district announcements, there's the high school announcement and then there's even elementary school announcements because of the enrollments that your children have. Here we have a snapshot of your inbox, if you want to see all of your messages, you just click those here. Most inbox messages can also be sent off to your email. They may also be communicated through voice and text as well. If as a parent, you need to contact a particular student, student's teacher that's in here. You can go in and click this contact list and it will pull up. All of the information to find the specific teachers, coaches or district school personnel that is, has been provided to you. Phone numbers, email addresses are all listed depending on whether the school district is providing that information for you. Another item that you can have on here is you can take a look at over on the menus over here. And you can see things such as your grades, so of a student. So here we have Dylan's grades and you will notice as I scroll down here to U S history. We, we have both standards based scoring and traditional term grades. If I click into those term grades, I can actually see all of the assignments that are listed. And that's true for the assignments here for various standards as well. Other items that we have access to as parents is the ability to take a look and pay for fees that are on here. Here you'll see that Dylan has an art fee for that class, I can add that to my cart. I can click over to my cart and with one click, I can pay for that fee. And just like that, I have a reference number, I can print a receipt for it and that fee has been paid.
And so again, that link will take you straight to the, the video for the parent portal and it also has other information on there as well.
It's Christie Fields.
So how, how will the teachers implement the grades into this system? Will, is it gonna be linked to their own computers so that it's simultaneously, or will it be additional work?
So teachers are gonna just change the path and what they're used to doing. So everyone, all staff or all teachers go through rapid identity. They'll click on an infinite campus button and then from there, when they're inside, there'll be a main menu, they'll click on. Forgive me, instruction and then from instruction, they'll click on gradebook. So when they do that, they'll have their courses, just like they do now in Power School, it's just gonna look different. And so when Mr. Bobby talks about summer training, that's where a part of my. Calendar and getting that all situated before July first, so that we could have documentation and such that needs to be done prior to.
So will it be easier for them to implement grades in there than it is now? Because sometimes grades aren't in for whatever reason.
It's just gonna be different, just the interface is just gonna be different. And so we want to be able to handhold a lot of our teachers to feel comfortable and understanding of what that looks like. So for grades three thirteen, they will have Canvas where their gradebook will do what's called grade passback and it will just seamlessly move in. And then for K two, they're still gonna be doing standards based grading. But again, it's gonna be the path or the breadcrumbs that are just gonna be a little different. But we want to be able to secure them with screenshots and videos. But we want to be able to secure them with screenshots and video and such like that. And then they'll also have their digital tech coach and their data manager trained extensively prior to the opening of school.
And, and so Ms. Christie, that's a great lead in to the last point. So we included in your packet of information, um, our Infinite Campus Professional Development Plan. We do not have dates on this and there are a couple of reasons why. Uh, number one is, uh, we, we know that some of this training is going to take place when staff are not on campus. Uh, but we also do not want them to eat up their teacher workdays in training. So we're currently working with Ms. Erica to try to develop some type of, some type of stipend plan for them. So that we're not just asking them to come into the building for free. So what the team has put together is on page one. Uh, I'm going to call this the June training. And this is going to be training that definitely has to take place before we become, I'm sorry, it looks like. You got it, Dr. Manuel? Yeah. So at the top, it should say twenty-five, twenty-six, Infinite Campus Professional Development Plan. And so on page one, these are the trainings that will take place in June after we've closed out the school year for individuals that are going to need to have the program up and running on July one. So say for instance, high school counselors, we know that he, uh, as much work and his effort as we put into registration and getting those eight classes right, we know that there's going to be, need to be some cleanup in July and August. So in June, our expectation is that all high school counselors will come in for about a debt, half a day to a day training. Uh, go over how to change schedules, schedules inputting students and all of that. So again, you can see here what we will go over with those individuals prior to the site, prior to Infinite Campus becoming live in July. So then if you flip over, our training will continue in July with principals, again, teaching our principals how just the basic navigations. How to get in, how to search, how to look for different things within the system. Now keep in mind that our data managers are already receiving training on how to do all of this stuff. So the data managers will already know this prior to the site becoming live July one. So you can see again, principals, basic expectations, and then we're going to ask them to go through training on grading reports, attendance and behaviors, scheduling. And then in August, this is where we're going to really have to get with Ms. Eric and try to find some money to bring individuals back on a half a day or a day basis for that individual training. Cause as someone who has gone through all four of the, all four transitions, sometimes train, train the trainer does not work. We need all the people sitting in front of us and holding their hand as we walk through. Uh, so that is the reason that we've laid the plan out as it is now because of the importance of getting this right and ensuring on day one that our stu- that our staff's ready to implement Infinite Campus.
All right, Mr. Bobby, I think Mr. Terry got a question for you.
Mr. Bobby, um, uh, I, I'm not sure everybody, if you haven't gone through this process, I'm not sure, uh, everybody appreciates, uh, how taxing this can be. Uh, I'm, I'm certain that, um, that this is not an easy, uh, undertaking. Uh, one of the, one of the things about these source of databases is they've got to be set up right from the beginning. You don't want to start using, you don't want to start using it halfway through the year, say, man, I wish we would have done such as such. Quick question, um, what information about the student is, is going to be in this system? For example, can we go in and, and put things like club affiliations, teams and
Yes, it will have, yes, it will have the same capabilities as Power School. And so in Power School, you could identify athletic teams, uh, bus numbers, transportation, all of that is in the system.
Yeah. Are there any tools that, um, that we're currently using that this could potentially replace other than Power School?
No, not to my knowledge, team.
So it's not going to?
We're connected, yeah. So all of our app, no, I don't want to say all. We are working through our applications that are kind of stand alone. Uh, all, all applications that we're currently using that use Power School on the background, where those are all going to transfer, transfer over as well. And I think your question is going back to, uh, Infinite Campus Messenger. If it was up and running as it should, we could have the possibility to say, we don't want to use Thrill Share anymore. But because of our stories and everything we're hearing about, uh, Messenger, we do not want to move forward with that yet.
What system do we use for, uh, for, for making calls?
That Thrill Share.
That's Thrill Share, okay. Because, um, I hear from, from people that, you know, they'll say, I got, I, I was, started getting calls this morning at six thirty about a bus that my child don't even ride. So is there any way that we can filter that sort of thing out and say, well, just call the people that need to be called?
And that, and that
That would be the messenger?
Yeah. Extract that.
Thank you, Mr. Bobby.
Yes. And ju- just to remind everyone, and I, you know, this is not a decision that was made by us. Remember, this is a statewide rollout. Uh, again, we just opted to go with phase two as opposed to phase one.
All right, thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Bobby.
Thank y'all.
Next, we'll have the programs for the new C T center. Dr. Wendy Dorsey-Car.
Good afternoon, Chairman Leach, Superintendent and Board Members. We just wanted to review, um, the new Career Center programs that will be moving over to the new Career Center. You should have a copy of the document that you see on the screen also in your packet. Um, and so I'm just going to highlight the ones that are going in phase one. So automotive technology, um, and you'll also see under automotive, all the certifications that students will be able to earn if they finish that pathway. Welding, construction academy, which includes carpentry, masonry, plumbing, electrical, E M T, drafting engineering, computer engineering, network engineering and Adobe visual video design. New programs that will occur over there are culinary arts, drone technology, metronics and industry labs. So currently this is what we're working on planning out for the new Career Center based on what we've seen, um, based on our My Future and seeing other reports that we're getting. Any questions about that?
Bobby, we have scheduled to occupy that building when?
All right, Mr. Bobby.
So our, our current, um, completion date is June twenty-sixth. Uh, at the current time, that does not include what area D slash phase two. So, uh, they have been promising me an updated, uh, completion schedule to include that area since Christmas. So hopefully within, hopefully at our next meeting, which will be the first Thursday in March, I'll have a, a updated date of when the entire facility will be done. But all of phase one, uh, areas A, B and C, uh, completion date, June twenty-sixth.
And that meeting would be March tenth is our next committee meetings. We put a committee together to be prepared to occupy that building, um, and the next one is March the
March tenth is the next one at eight thirty, um, that the, all the high school principals and other committee members will be here to continue planning for the Career Center.
All right, um, Dr. Manuel, do we got Mr. Cray?
I just wanted to make a comment that this process of what courses have been chosen, it wasn't done just by the central office. This has been going on quite some time, the needs and everybody. And we voted as a board, what was our first priority, second priority, and we went through. So it's been a long tedious process for those of you may be wondering, well, how did that get selected? So, but it's been a long process. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Mr. Dr. Manuel, Mr. Cray.
Um, since it's down the road, do we have any businesses yet committed? As far as where we were talking about those labs that businesses would come on? Has anybody said, okay, I will be there, you provide me the space?
What we have is letters of interest and we have not made a commitment.
Commitment, okay. And you're saying that part, Mr. Bobby, is not included in what your latest completion date is, does not include that, right?
That, that is correct, but they have assured me if for what, if for any reason, area D slash phase two looks like a, a delayed completion outside of June twenty-sixth, they will work to get us a C O for, uh, phase one.
The rest of
So that we could get into the building, uh, and use the entire building, just not get over into what is being called phase two.
Okay, thank you.
Any, any other questions for Dr. Carr? Nope, thank, thank you, Dr. Carr. Dr. Wish, you got anything?
Again, we placed a card at your site. Uh, we want to collect, can't even talk, collect those so that we can sit down with Terry and put together our C and I curriculum committee meeting. And then we also meet on the tenth with finance and construction, um, on that. I do want to say thank you to the team. It's evident every time that they present. Um, we have a powerful team of folks that understand the work and doing just great work for this district and our kids. That's why you did a wonderful job in your presentation, very clear. And a lot of folks got the answers right. That's evidence of good teaching. So thank you.
Thank you. Well, this, um, Mr. Cray?
Uh, just a reminder, it was email sent out that before the finance construction meeting. If you have something you would like to get put on the list just for looking at right now for plans for a capital outlay project, please get that to me by this coming Thursday. I believe that's the date, or it was said February twenty-seventh, I'm not sure. I think that's the date that was put out, but it was sent in an email, just get it to me. If you have questions about capital outlay, what it is and how it shoes, please give Ms. Erica a call. She can clarify that and get us some things so we can get on the list. Cause we did some projects earlier and it makes them go a lot better. We've got a list that we can constantly refer to. So please get that to me, please. Thank you.
Now, Dr. Manuel?
I was just, I don't know, did I hear Mr. Terry? Mr. Terry, did you say we were having a meeting March the fourth? Did I dream that up?
Should be March
I don't know what, what did I hear there?
It is, it is March, March, yeah, March the fourth.
At what time, Mr. Terry?
Is it, is it five? March the fourth at five?
Thank you.
Then the construction and finances, March the tenth at, um, is that, is that five, is what time is that, Mr. Cray? It's at five two, it's at five P M. Also. Well, this will, um, conclude our, our work session. Um, thank y'all for coming out. Uh, thank the, uh, fellow board members and stuff and thank the cabinet for your presentation and for us better understanding what we have going on. Do I got a motion to adjourn? I got a motion to adjourn by Mr. John Simmons and second, a second by, uh, Mr. Manuel, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?